Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Mayor Protim Ricki Gonson.
We'll open up with a large prayer as bow heads. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, Amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed against us. Who pays the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call.
Mayor Protim Ricki Gonson.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard. Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Dahl.
Here.
Item one, we have any comment cards? Seeing no comment cards, I'll remind people at this time to silence your phones. Uh, Madam Clerk, item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of November 6th, 2024, which were published on November 20th, 2024, which will be published.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion or comments on our meeting of November 6th minutes? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Three A.
Ordinance number 2024-29, and ordinance amending and reenacting Section 86, 116 of the City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances related to school zone enforcement times.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricki Gonson, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there any here from the public to comment on this item? Hearing seen none, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed, and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Now we move on, and I need a motion on our main motion.
So move.
Second.
Mayor Protim Ricki Gonson, and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item? Uh, just to tell everybody what we're doing, this is on Blue Line where we are making the times match, the new state statute that came out, that changed some of that, and that's why we're going through this to get it right. It will be different at each school zone because the times of the schools that they let in and you know, and let out are earlier, are different. And we also will have to do a little additional signage, and Public Works will handle that signage.
But all of them are changing at least 25 miles per hour.
Yes, that is the other part of that. That will get us to where we're all consistent.
Even around the elementary schools?
Well, only the three, this is only concerning the schools that we have Blue Line cameras.
Okay. All right, good.
Yes. Any other comments, questions?
It's a good thing I'm not gonna be here next year. We have to talk about that Blue Line thing.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, if nothing for-
One question.
Yes, sir.
So I know what he's going, you, you, I'm concerned too about that.
Yeah.
And not to bring it up, but we only got two, two months left, so might as well.
Let it roll.
Why don't we have cameras at, at Peson?
That's what I thought.
If you remember, Blue Line, they called them an armadillo, but they ran those lines across the road. They came to town, they did a study. And they studied all the school zones, and they only picked the ones with a major amount of infractions. And that was their decision.
Okay, but you don't have a say in it? Because, I mean, I see people flying down Bruce Hard Street every single day, all day long. And Cherokee. I've called to complain just because they, Cherokee's on the backside of the school, what is supposed to be that safe walk to school, uh, path. And people are flying down there. People have been asking for a stop sign just to slow them down because it's like a little highway down there. That, to me, makes no sense. We should have that at every school. And I know I won't be here next year, but I hope whoever takes my place that they vote to, to get it at every school. Because we have children walking up and down that street all day long. And I can show you video, because you come to my house, I can show you some ring doorbell while they're flying down the street. Okay, I just feel like that, that should be at all the schools.
They can have mine. Okay.
They can have yours?
I'll take it. Although later you'll be calling asking for that.
Is their solution?
At this point, I'm not sure. I have to talk, I have to, I mean, Blue Line came in, they're a business, they came in, they promised to lower our speed, they promised to, you know, make schools own safe, which they have done, and we know it's had an impact, we, we've all felt that.
In certain areas.
In certain areas. But they picked the schools because they pay for all the equipment. It's $375,000 worth of equipment at each school. So, I mean, I just put it on the line like it is. It is a business. So they looked at the major infractions, and they picked the schools that they wanted to do, and they said they'd do five. The other two that they couldn't do, and, and again, it went by the count. It was, it's, it's a business. They couldn't do the two that they were gonna put up on state highways. Uh, remember, they put one up and had to take it down because the state said they couldn't.
Right.
But they came, you know, with that mindset of, we're gonna pick the ones that have the highest traffic count and the highest infractions because, you know, they, they
Okay, so-
They ran it like a business.
I, I get that.
And we took it because we didn't have $375,000 per each school. Uh, just like if we break the contract, because we did look into that, if you remember when everybody came and we, you know, renegotiated a new deal and, and got them to lower some fees and made some concessions, which were, you know, we were wise to do that, I think. But we would have owed them $375,000 per school.
Okay, so-
Just to put some context to it, I mean, I'm not saying, and I'm not saying you're wrong.
No, I'm just-
I mean, people, our people drive too fast all over town, but.
Agreed. However, I mean, I know that it's a business. But just like the other company that came with a great deal, and then they didn't come through, I feel like we're in a similar situation.
Which one? We've had a few of those, which one?
I'm talking about the camera company.
Oh, okay, all right. I didn't know what you were talking about.
I'm sorry, this is four years ago, but remember that camera company?
Oh, yes, I do.
And they, they were terrible, and we had to come in with our own solution. So my thing is, is that this is something similar. So, I mean, maybe we should go back to Blue Line and say, hey, listen, what would it take to get this at all of our schools and see what they say? Because I'm telling you, if you, if you, you go and sit in my yard and watch these folks fly down Bruce Hard Street all day long. Anytime you wanna sit there.
Okay, thank you.
Bring your desk.
Kinda might be an opportunity.
I thought-
Yes, sir.
You know, DeeDee, and it's probably not as accurate as I thought, but I really, I really thought that the, the three schools that we put them at, people would be much more aware of the schools since they passed, and they all pass all over too. I thought it'd be like a learning curve.
No.
And obviously, it's not.
It's not. It really isn't.
I would thought as time progresses, people pass in front of North Lewis, and they would see other schools on and slow, so you're saying that that's not a fact?
No. As a matter of fact, I am literally looking for these signs that I saw in Atlanta where it says, slow down, uh, act like your, your kid lives here. So just put in my neighbor's yard as we go toward the school, just because it's, they're going that fast. If I can find those signs, I'm gonna buy them for my neighbors.
Goes to this school? I got a sign, child.
Oh.
Oh, we're gonna talk after, that's a good idea. That could be fun.
I knew you would like that.
I do, I do. Yes, ma'am.
I also still have a problem with, um, giving at least the 10 miles over, you know, in the school zone as well. That makes no sense at all. Why put it there if it's not gonna go to, uh, and there's nothing funny about it at all? You know, um, why would you put? While, and I'm, I have the floor now.
Yes, ma'am.
And why would you put a camera there to slow people down, but yet they can still go to speed limit of the, of the street anyway? That makes no sense. You're defeating your purpose there.
Agreed.
Of slowing people down. If I know I can get with, get away with 10 miles over, why would I slow down?
And on the flip side, not, not a debate, Blue Line, we picked them because after a year, they said that they would be down to 10% from where they started. It would be down to 10% infractions.
Yep.
I know, hang on.
But mayor, we didn't, they didn't set the, the 10 out over. They didn't.
You're right.
So don't go there.
No, no, no. My point is, okay, Blue Line tells me on a regular basis, they haven't seen a town like us, and that our people are taking it like a challenge. Because we are not, it is, it is working, and to some extent, it has done a lot of good, but our tickets are still higher than they even thought they would be. So it's almost like we took it like a challenge. Uh, so there's two sides to everything.
Because you go down Center Street the same way. I see people flying down Center Street by Magnolia School like it's a slow speed highway, and the lights are blinking. I'm going 25, and they're flying past me. So, I'm with Council, uh, Councilwoman Ledbetter. You know, we had this big debate. I was like adamant that we not do that.
We rehashing it tonight, but we did, we did have a bit. It's fine, that's why I love these meetings.
I just feel like we really defeated our purpose by giving people, why give them 10, 10 mile grace period when they're driving too fast anyway? These are our children.
I understand.
Seems like not.
Yes, sir.
I got one comment, and we can move on.
Sure.
I think location of the school on the street makes a lot to do with it. Lewis Street, that school's so far back, and the kids don't walk to that school. I never saw one walking yet. They used to when North Lewis was close. I went to North Lewis, Dotson. This school you're talking about, I understand about safety of the kids, but you gotta look at the location of the school. If it's 500 yards from the street and no one walking there, it could be different in a school that's 200 feet from the street that kids walk there. So you gotta look at that, talk about safety, let's look at the safety, because it's not about, you know, it's about how the kids get to the school. And maybe you can reach out to your school board member. If they really care about their children in that district, maybe they can do something to help out for that district.
I, I get what you're saying, Dan, but here's Councilman, uh, here's the, here's the issue with that. Maybe the kids are not walking to school because of the fact that these people are driving so fast down the street, and their parents are afraid to let them walk. Maybe if we controlled that, the kids would walk to school.
I, I, I know.
That's just, just a thought.
Yeah, I go, and before the cameras, I live there.
One at a time.
Now, and maybe so. I can't read what the people think about bringing kids to, but I go down that street at least three times, uh, two times, three times a day. My mom lives not far, and I never saw none walking before the cameras, after the cameras, but that's, I don't wanna get in that debate, but, you know, I understand your concern. We all got different concerns in each district, you know.
We do.
Do. Thank you.
Any more discussion, and, okay, well, now we get back to where we started, and it's fine to adjust our ordinances to meet the state law. Everybody go with that? All right, then please vote your machines. Thank you. Four A.
Resolution number 24-147, a resolution announcing the dates of the regular meetings of the New Iberia City Council to be held in 2025.
I need a motion.
Move.
Checking.
Councilman Dan Dahl, Councilman Marlon Lewis. Any debate on this one? Okay, it's a joke. All right, everybody cool with that? All right, then.
I, I got one question, though.
Okay, sure.
When, when, when is it gonna be the first council meeting of Jan, in January?
January 7th.
January is-
7th?
Yeah. So the new council members will get sworn in before the council meeting on the steps like we've done the last two times, and then we'll come on up and have some business. Well, on this item, if you please vote your machines. Thank you. See, we don't debate everything. All right, four B.
Resolution number 24-148, a resolution awarding contract to Judy Site Contractors for the Love's Travel Spot, Love's Travel Stop Sewer Utility Extension Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed, and Councilman Marlon Lewis. This is for the Love's Truck Stop, and this is the commitment we made to bring sewer and to do a sewer bore.
From where? Oh, that's the bore to the-
This is the bore that goes under Highway 90, and that, that is what hooks them up to our city system.
And can anyone else in the future hook up to the system or just for Love's?
Um, for the first, the sewer lift station, they're putting in, and then it will be turned over to the city. So at some point, yes. Now, it doesn't change any of our contract requirements that we have, you know, with the parish right now. But, uh, we can't say someone couldn't tie in, but they have to meet all the same contract requirements, and we're not changing any of that.
So that, that lift station and that bore is going to the plant?
Yes.
Or it's going to a pipe that's going to-
Well, it goes to some lines that go to the plant.
And then it's gravity? Or no, it's pumped?
Yes, yes, okay, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah. Yeah. Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Four C.
Resolution number 24-149, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the Center Street sidewalks project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion for Mr. Broussard.
Okay, that's a, that's a different one. All right.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Broussard, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Any discussion? These are our new sidewalks on Center Street that Mr. Broussard worked very hard to get, and, uh, they were needed, and they're, I see them being used. Any questions or comments? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you, Councilman Broussard. Four D.
Resolution number 24-150, a resolution approving change order number one for the Ann Street Park Project, FPNC Project Number 50 ML12203, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Okay, I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed, Councilman Marlon Lewis, and we have David Allen here. Tell us the story.
All right, so we have a change order just to, uh, bring the contract up to date on rain delays for the project. Um, just extends the contract time, uh, for the time that they couldn't work, or wet conditions
Right.
on the project. So they're making good pace.
Yeah, I was about to say, are they gonna need 53 days?
Um, well, that puts them at December 14th.
Mm-hmm.
So that's in a few weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
We have electrical items that are on back order right now.
Oh.
Lights and panels and gear switches and stuff. So as always, that's the thing that holds things back, electrical.
Would that prevent us from doing our ribbon cutting?
Um, I think that would be a call that the administration would make if they wanna do an acceptance on that. It's kind of a big item. Um, so we have to watch, if we do substantial completion before that, um, then that could go over the substantial completion allowance, which is usually, uh, 10%.
Okay.
So we just have to-
But our ribbon cutting, we could do our ribbon cutting. That's, we're not accepting anything. That's not anything official.
Yeah, just, um, that's just a component of it.
And I wanna make sure it gets done before-
Yeah, me too.
Before this council leaves.
Yeah, yeah.
We, uh, I'll make sure of that.
Okay, I mean, it is, I, I was over there yesterday, and it is absolutely beautiful, the playground.
Definitely coming along. We have a few little items that they put the sign up, uh, they gotta do some dirt work along the side of the road, and then we still have to coat-
That's when it's really gonna pop.
Yeah.
Court, we're just still waiting for some rain to wash out the, uh, tannins from the mulch.
Okay.
So there's a discoloration that's happening, and they'll-
That didn't happen last night? Because it rained.
Should've helped, should've helped.
There was still some of that darker color water run off.
We didn't want to stain the new court.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried is, is that you put that stuff, and then you got like Coca-Cola rolling across the court, and it's just gonna discolor it, so.
No, no, I understand. Um, mayor, we are gonna have that, uh, camera up, right? Because that, the, the fences around the playground, that's low.
Mm-hmm.
I was hoping it was gonna be high, like around the basketball court.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but since it is low, we're definitely gonna need that camera. But it looks great. Good one, Dee.
Good, thank you, sir.
We do have one camera on the corner, though, right?
Yes, we do.
So you looking for another one?
Yeah, one that's by the park, so people feel safe. Yeah.
And we have, uh-
Light it up.
Yeah, we're gonna have lights.
We have more cameras coming. There are Jeff Landry cameras of the money that we got from the state. That's what we call them internally. And so I have it on a list. I have it on the Jeff Landry list.
Okay, cool.
Anybody else?
Got some more people to do.
Oh, just to comment.
Sure.
I did talk to, uh, David about planting a tree there, and he said that it would be okay. The, uh, Isaiah Garden Club was looking for the space to plant a tree this year, and I said that would be a good place because they, they don't really have any trees there now.
Uh, did we cut that tree down in the back?
Oh, yes, we did.
Yeah, we did, we did.
It was a water oak. It was not that healthy, and it was gonna cause some trouble.
It was definitely unhealthy.
Get a new tree, and, you know, we'll be good.
Yeah.
Cool.
So, thank the Isaiah Garden Club for, you know, considering.
Yeah, and, and I will tell you that, um, we have, um, a donation already from one organization from downtown. Uh, the Javian Congregation of Hope is going to give away 50 basketballs to the kids in the neighborhood. Oh, neat. Yeah, and we're gonna have face paint and all that stuff, but, and give away hot dogs and stuff, but they're gonna give away 50 basketballs so the kids feel like they can come out there and play.
Cool.
So, thanks for all that.
You wanna do that at the same time we do the ribbon cutting?
Yeah, I'm hoping we could.
Let's, let's make it a party.
Yeah.
That's a good picture.
Cool. Anything further? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank y'all. Thank you, thank you, thank you, ma'am. Four E.
Resolution number 24-151, a resolution declaring the attached list of properties to be in a dangerous and dilapidated condition, authorizing their inclusion in the American Rescue Plan Act, One Block at a Time Two Blighted Property Project, and further authorizing the mayor to execute agreements with property owners in connection therewith contingent upon clean title search.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second. Councilman Marlon Lewis, Mayor Protim Ricki Gonson. Any discussion on that? This, this is our ARPA money that internally we are doing demos following the same criteria as the half a million dollar demo grant we got from the state. Let everybody know what we're doing.
So, I was asking, uh, Lani earlier, this, this is the final list, or, I mean,
Yes.
Nothing can be added to this list?
No, this is the final list. It's closed out. We do have a few of them. We're still working on, uh, title issues. Uh, but this is, you know, the max list, because we, we've taken all the rest of the money and moved it to the restroom renovations, which are sewer gates, uh, Martin Luther King, and bank. We need to do all three, uh, and we, David, I think he left, but we've got plans issued on that, and they're actually out for bid.
Okay.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
Oh, that's me.
Oh, yeah, reset. Thank y'all very much. You all right?
My little thing broke.
You can never vote-
You can't vote anymore, man.
Can't vote yes again.
Oh, my.
Man, I finally know, is that easy?
I got it.
I broke all the nose. Uh, four F.
Resolution number 24-152, a resolution authorizing the publication of notice of the filing of a petition for annexation filed by Edward A. LaSalle et al. For annexation for an approximately 13.18 acre tract located in Section 18, mm-mm, Section 21 and 22, U12SR7E.
So move. I have a motion by Councilman Dan Dahl, and who is the second?
Me.
Oh, well, Councilwoman DeeDee Ledbetter, thank you. Uh, discussion on this, and just to bring it up, this is our new residential development, and this is a portion of the property. The rest of it was in the city. This was 13 acres that just weren't, was not, same, same owner, same everything, but it was not in the city.
And so this would be part of which district? Six?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And, um, is this, there's no houses on this thing right now?
Not yet. We're, we're moving towards some other steps, and we, uh, our developers actually here, and, uh, it will be, it will be.
Okay, no, I was just asking because, um, I don't know how many homes are, you know, we're planning to have there.
Yes.
But we just, we did our, our, um, redistricting stuff. It's not gonna mess up our numbers.
Well, we, we good, we good till the next, we good for, yes, sir, good for 10 years?
Won't be overnight.
Okay.
I mean, it's gonna take some time.
Yeah.
It's gonna take, they gotta build the subdivision, build the houses.
You might be back up here by then.
Yeah, it could be.
You never know.
Could be, but this is, yeah, we have several different tracks moving along the same direction tonight, and this is one of the annexation pieces.
Excellent.
Questions, comments? Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, five A.
Introduction of ordinance number 2024-31, and ordinance enlarging the boundaries of the City of New Iberia, Louisiana, and amending the Charter of the City of New Iberia, and setting for public hearing on December 3rd, 2024.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Uh, Mayor Protim Ricki Gonson, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Any discussion on this item concerning the same piece?
This is the same piece of property?
Yes, ma'am. Everybody good? And please vote your machines. Very much. Five B.
Introduction of ordinance number 2024-32, and ordinance amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of New Iberia, and setting for public hearing on December 3rd, 2024.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed, and I think maybe Brooke, Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Any discussions on this item?
So.
That's reallocating the money.
For the bathrooms.
Now we have the money for the bathrooms, and kinda setting the money on any other item that we patent. Because remember, we have till the end of the year to lock this up, so this sets our final plan in place. This is kinda cool because we started this together, and now this is the final project that, you know, will come to pass from, from this money. Which are the bathrooms at Three Parks.
Exactly. So, tell me again what we're gonna do at Bank Street Park? You know, it's closer to my house, so I'm very concerned.
Bank Street Park, I wish David was here, but it's the restrooms. It's all internal on the restrooms. It's, uh, fixtures, it's toilet pit, it's, we have $89,000, $90,000. So it's gonna refurbish those restrooms.
And they're gonna be open to the public?
Well, that's not from this money. That'll have to-
No, but I'm just saying, in general, it's supposed to be open now.
What's, what's happening, okay, when we finish, we're gonna have somebody's job. I don't know who, Heather, but somebody's job is gonna be to open and close restrooms, because what's gonna happen? We have the new restrooms downtown, okay? So those will, remember, there's two small ones, and then bigger ones for only festivals. Okay, but those two small ones are gonna be locked and unlocked every day. I'm not sitting here.
Right.
Well, it's gonna be the same thing, because everybody has had that requirement, or asked for that to happen. We have, uh, one at the West End that's not always open, it got vandalized a couple times, and then we blocked it. We have-
Supposed to be unlocked, though, now.
The ones at Bank, yes. But what's gonna have to happen, you know, now, it might need to be, I'm not saying I can pay people overtime to do that. So it might be that they're unlocked at 7:00 and locked at 4:00. Uh, you know, I can't leave them open the whole time. We have had too many bad experiences when we left them unlocked. Uh, but somebody, somebody's job is gonna be who works for the park to run around and lock and unlock those restrooms.
Okay, but locking them at 4:00 is just way too early, especially if you have games and stuff like that going on.
Then we're gonna, when we have staff there, we can make provisions for that. On the days that we have nothing going on, I mean, I don't know that I'd pay people overtime, you know, to go lock a bathroom at 10 o'clock at night. Now, if we have a staff there, sure. I mean, I understand, if we have a basketball game.
I'm not saying 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
But, I mean, again, the parks are for the people, and so they need to be able to use the restroom.
Mm-hmm.
And so we need to figure out a solution.
Well, I, I don't-
Not that, I mean,
Yeah.
We shouldn't lock our people out.
I, I understand, but we shouldn't have to rebuild our restrooms as often if we have to, and, I mean, I'm not being ugly, the vandalism's real. I mean, what happens in those restrooms, I've seen it for myself. So I'm trying to make a, a new start, if you will, by renovating them all, and they come up with a new plan. You know, because you can think of all kinds of things. Uh, Heather and I and Lloyd kicked it around. You could have a timer, but, you know, if you're gonna vandalize something, and it's gonna be locked at 8:00, so at 6:00, you put a chalk in the door, or you go, you know, I mean, there's just more than one way, or you don't let it close. It, it's difficult, besides a person going and physically locking and unlocking them, that you're gonna know they're locked, and that nothing happens. Because we've had some, I mean, I'm not, I don't feel like telling a little story, in that Chamber of Commerce moments, I don't feel like telling these stories up here, but our bathrooms have seen, so we could write a book.
Okay, but you, what you could do-
I don't know who read it, but, anyway. I don't know who read it, but anyway.
No, just from an IT standpoint, if you do put one of those kinda locks, you could say, you could have it alert you if the door is not closed, and that way, they only have to go to the ones that didn't close.
Maybe so, I mean, I'm researching.
Just a thought.
Okay, that's fine, but I do know we will have a new job title of locker and unlocker.
But then they could also be locking the parks and stuff like that, you know? Because Ann Street would be, needs to be locked.
Yep, that's another one, we locking Ann Street too?
Yep.
We'll have a list. Anybody else? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
Introduction of special ordinance number twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five oh-two, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect carryovers from fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and setting for public hearing on December third, twenty-twenty-four.
I need a motion.
So move.
Mayor Protem Ricky Gonceland, and Councilman Martin Lewis. This item is to finish cleaning up our budget, uh, and you have it in front of you. I see. What's that? Yeah, yeah.
What is coming over you?
I don't think so, this item, she can, if you got a question?
Yeah, I wanna know, what's the investigation tool, this is the first I see there.
Oh, that's for the police department.
Okay, I mean, I, okay, just, I didn't know, I figured it would, but I didn't know if it was crime cameras or in the, whatever it was.
It's a camera.
Okay, I didn't know that, so I just wanted to-
They just put, we do have some detective-
I knew it was correct, I just-
Narcotics tools, and then we have, we already had the account, and it's the cameras as well.
Okay, alright, so, that's fine, this is my question. I had seen the budget amendment before, I just didn't know what it was described as.
Yes. Any other comments, questions? Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Alright, 6A.
Resolution number twenty-four-one fifty-three, a resolution granting preliminary slash final subdivision approval of a forty-eight point six-five acre residential subdivision development called Tesh Haven located along Parkview Drive slash Old Genereut Road, contingent upon the annexation of that portion of the forty-eight point six-five acre tract not now located within the corporate limits of the city of New Iberia, all is recommended by the New Iberia Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
By Councilman Dan Doll, and a second by Mayor Protem Ricky Gonceland. Any discussion on this item?
Well, ma'am, I wanna applaud you for helping making this happen, and the developer to be open-minded about what we needed, because this is something that never happened in the city in a long time.
Very long time.
And the investment that he wants to do in this city, and happened to be in my district, and I'm excited about it, and we had some concerns about some traffic of this, and he helped with you addressing that, and we're addressing that now, and I was just happy of the open dialogue we had between, with him, and how it's gonna be so good for us to say you can work here and live here, because the homes that I've seen that they built could keep our young people here, it can keep, it can keep our people here. I probably, we don't have a market in the city for people to buy a home, they do have some in the Paris, but in the city, we really don't, so I'm excited about it, I know it's gonna be, it's got, it'll take a while before it happens, we got infrastructure, we got a lot of things to do, but, and I applaud his investment in this community, and you working with him to make this happen, and with the landowners, because this has been a long time, I mean, years.
Years.
The first year I was here, and that's been thirty years, and it just, it's just all working out to show that we are making growth, we are moving forward, and we're not putting roadblocks, we reaching out to see what we can do, and I think a lot was done, and Mr. McLean was very, very open-minded about my concerns, because I had some, the neighbors' concerns, and when that happens, I say, that's a good neighbor, when a builder wants to do things to make the neighborhood appreciate and be comfortable with it, and so I'm glad, and I hope the council supports it, because it's gonna be something that we all be proud of one day, and just more, more tax dollars for the city to have to continue to grow, and I just appreciate everything he did, Mary, and what he did, and the people that own the land, because it was a struggle, when people own land, it's a family, and they hate to get rid of it, because their grandfather might have had another grandfather's grandfather, it was, it was tough, it was, it's been years, I can't even tell you how many years it's been, you know, at least I'm able to see it, I might not see it happening, but at least I see it, the start of it, and just thank you so much, and thank you for making this happen.
Well, hats off to you, because you've been working on this a long time, and I couldn't have made it happen without you, I mean, you knew the families, you knew everybody involved, and you started this thirty years ago, so, I mean, I've, for the last ten years, been talking to the same families, and trying to get some things to move, and it just seems like, you know, now's the time, sometimes things just happen when they're supposed to happen, so it's, but thanks for your help, and I know there's one additional sentence?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, at some point, we can have our discussion, and then, or you wanna amend it now?
Well, it's part of it.
Yeah.
The one that we added about the additional ingress and exgress to the Haven properties to be approved prior to final approval of this subdivision, I mean, I had some concerns about the in and outs, and the neighbors did, about the traffic, and the contract, I mean, the developer was open-minded, and we're working on that now, and when that's taken care of, then we'll have a final approval, but we didn't wanna slow it down.
No.
We don't wanna wait to that, because we need to continue this path, because a lot of things gotta happen after this, and we didn't wanna slow it down or stop it, for sure.
And the future's bright, the family has a lot more property, we actually have two more annexation requests with our city attorney, so I mean, I think that this is the beginning of, you know, real growth for our city. We have other areas of town that we need to continue this effort, and we need to grow, and I realize that, but this is a start, and I think that, you know, any opportunity that comes up to grow our city anywhere in this city, I, you know, wanna take advantage of it, but this, this one's huge, this is a big development that I don't think the city's ever had this many homes at once, I think it's gonna be the biggest residential development, you know, we've had at one time, so hats off to our developer.
But remember, it comes back for final approval.
I know that, I know that. Anybody else? So, is that a motion before, I'm trying to do our-
That's a motion.
So, is that a motion?
Yeah.
To make that addition?
To make that addition to the original motion.
So, we have a motion on the floor to amend the original, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor, Councilman Martin Lewis.
No, you got it.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
You good?
Okay, further discussion? Yes, anybody?
No, we need for discussion.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I was just gonna ask, are we gonna have to extend city utilities to this, or are they already there?
We, some utilities are there, you know, of course, Loco does the water, we will be extending sewer, I have it in our, we approved it in our budget, so we have money to extend the sewer, that's our biggest expense, if you will, electricals, Cleco, Cleco's always been cooperative that when they have more users, you know, I mean, there's more money, they're gonna make money, it's a business, so, Cleco, Loco, you know, all of them are not gonna be an issue, we do have to spend money to extend the sewer, definitely.
Perhaps you should, and I don't know how it is, because I've never been in your neighborhood, but get Cleco to put you some underground cables, so they have all that-
No, it's to be underground.
Don't get me started on that, too.
Okay, we won't.
Yes.
We won't get you started. No, you know you can't.
We only have two more meetings, break.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Is, I saw, when I looked at the plaque, I saw the ingress and egress going to Lewis Street, that's not in the original plans, right? That's all coming to Genereut Road, right?
We're working on some concepts right now.
I saw it drawn in, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, rather just leave that alone for now, we have meetings, we're working on it, it is why we amended this, and you'll know what it'll be, not trying to be flippant, but we don't, I don't know what it's gonna be yet, we're working on some concepts, and we'll come back when we come back for final approval.
I saw it on the plaque, that's why I was asking.
I want to say what our lawyer wanted to say.
Oh.
I just wanted to say, this property, all this property we're talking about belonged to the fellow right behind Martin.
So, that's why I've been-
Edward LaSalle, the guy you knock off the wall all the time? He was the mayor of the city of New Iberia, Edward LaSalle owned all that property, from Bayou Tesh where you live, all the way to T Bayou, and this is his family that's doing this now, and that's the only thing I wanted to say.
That's cool.
But you could tell I wanted to say something, but that's what I wanted to say.
I know it's all the lawyer's speak.
Oh, that's it, it's always good.
Ma'am, I just wanted to say, on my first campaign signs, I put, "Let's Build Together", because I knew we needed the police department.
Yeah.
I knew we needed housing, I knew we needed sewer infrastructure, and man, just on my way out, having an investment of this magnitude, Mr. McLean and the LaSalle family is a stamp on my eight years serving, you know, "Let's Build Together", and it all, it's all coming together, you know? And Mr. McLean, I met you already, I was in Leadership Iberia in twenty-sixteen, and when he said developer, I kinda looked in the audience, I said, "Well, he must be the developer", because I remember you can't present your ideas to us at Leadership Chamber of Commerce, twenty-sixteen. But thank you for making an investment in our community.
Definitely.
Do you have any questions for me, as far as how it's gonna lay out, I mean, you have to answer a few questions.
Yes, okay, come on up. Don't tempt her.
You say ask questions, I always have a question.
You just extended our meeting by an hour.
But Deedee, I wasn't-
Mel, I'm gonna forget you.
Deedee, I wasn't finished bragging on my legacy yet.
Oh, well, go ahead, dude, you got the floor.
Part of my legacy, your turn.
That's why I told him to do it now, so it'd be beneath your belt, I said, "Let's rush it for Martin."
But I wanna thank, really, everybody at the table, you guys go through a lot of not appreciation with all the things that you dedicate to the city in your time, I've been developing in other cities for years, and I've never been as welcome as I have been since I've gotten involved in this project, and it is a big project, but I see a lot of potential here. My wife used to run the Sugarina when it first opened, she loves New Iberia, and she's always said, anytime that you get a crack down there, and you see that there may be some potential, I mean, there's a lot of good people down there, and you need to step up and put some things together, so, and timing's everything on the development, the LaSalle family's been sitting on this property for years, and it was quite a feat to get them all together, and get them all to sign off, thanks to Dan that kinda spearheaded that when he and I met, and I showed interest that I love the location, I love the timing of all the growth, and, you know, everybody's going to Broussard, and going, you know, south of Broussard, on the Parkway, and where all those developments, there's no reason not to have homes right here for your citizens to live, and we're gonna, you know, we think this is a start of maybe a five to seven-year plan for us, if the family sees the success, and we can continue to purchase additional properties and bring them in, that's our goal. We didn't come in here just to build a couple of hundred homes and leave, that's not what we're looking to do, so, you know, everything will be underground, curb and gutter, very first-class, beautiful entryway, like they've alluded to, we can't get into details, but, you know, we're very open, even though it would cost us a little more money to have a secondary entrance on what was originally approved, we wanna make it to where it's just a first-class development, and we will, this is probably my twentieth development, I've built over fifteen hundred, two thousand homes, and I've developed maybe three thousand lots here, and now I'm doing some rental developments over in Texas, but this is my home, and I love it, and I appreciate you guys. Questions?
So, I don't know if this is probably, maybe preliminary, maybe you can't answer the question now, but what's the square footage that you think you're gonna bring?
Anywhere, anywhere from probably eighteen hundred to twenty-five hundred, a lot of, a lot of four-bedroom houses for families, you know?
Okay.
That'll be the major focus, there'll be some three-bedroom plans, but a lot of four-bedrooms with bonus rooms, so-
Rent style or two-story?
A combination, yes, everything enclosed, garages, no open carports, big lots, big backyards, they're gonna have a common area in the development with probably a playground and a dog park, you know, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be a nice place to call home, and we love the name, Tesh Haven, I just, you know, it just, we take a lot of pride when we jump into a new development, really thinking about the history of the community, and where we're locating this particular place for people to call home, and, yeah.
Okay, and I know it's probably too early to talk price range, just wanted to kinda find the square footage, so people who are listening, they might know, okay, this is coming.
Yeah, well, we're gonna try to appeal to, you know, we're trying to break the bank, we're trying to, because things have gotten so expensive, you know, so we're trying to keep it, you know, two-fifty to three-fifty, kinda somewhere in that range, depending on the size and the floor plan.
Excellent.
Yeah.
That's great, thank you.
Anybody else?
And I saw some of your neighbors, don't you have one on East Broussard?
Yes, I do, yeah.
That one is nice.
Yeah, oh, thank you, yeah, well, we're excited.
We went to take it for the St. Jude home, y'all.
I was there, I was there all day, we're framing the new one right now.
Oh, cool, cool.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else? And I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much, this is a big step for us.
So, is that the amended or the original?
That's amended, so we made a substitute motion.
So, we approve the amendment?
Yes.
Just voted on the substitute.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Good, thank you. 7A.
Ordinance number twenty-two-four thirty, an ordinance amending general ordinance number three oh-four of the city of New Iberia relative to rezone from O one, open land to R one residential, that forty-eight point six-five acre area located in sections twenty-one and twenty-two, T twelve S, R seven E, Iberia Parish Assessors zero-five-zero-three, one-two-three, zero-zero-zero A, and zero-four-zero-two, seven-five-eight thousand, and shown as Tesh Haven, such zoning change continued upon the annexation of that portion of the forty-eight point six-five acre tract now located, not now located within the corporate limits of the city of New Iberia, all is recommended by the New Iberia Planning and Zoning Commission.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Dan Doll, Mayor Protem Ricky Gonceland, any discussion? Really the same issue, so, see none, please vote your machines.
I turned to it, and I couldn't find it. What am I doing? I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
You just had a scraping for 7A with 6B.
Yeah, I know that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 7A.
Babette LaStraps? Babette LaStraps to present monthly budget to actual report for November first, twenty-twenty-three through October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a budget report for the full fiscal year, it's not an audited report, but we're still working on shoring up the numbers for a lot of the grants and the projects, you'll notice that there's a difference, big difference, because the operating transfers, any operating transfers that were necessary, I've made before generating the report. So, you'll see the general fund revenues, we budgeted twenty-five point five million, actual is twenty-four and a half million, so we're at ninety-six percent of our budget. Budgeted expenditures for the general fund were twenty-seven point nine million, we're at twenty-two point eight million, which is eighty-two percent of our budget. The sales tax fund, we budgeted ten and a half million of revenue, we're at just under ten million, which is ninety-five percent of our budget. The expenditures for the sales tax fund were thirteen, we budgeted thirteen million, actual is eleven million three, so we're at eighty-seven percent of our budget. The Pepa Plex Tiff District, we budgeted eight hundred thousand in revenue, we're at seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, or ninety-four percent of our budget. The expenditures were nine hundred and forty-five thousand budgeted, we're at nine hundred and forty-four thousand actual, so we're right at budget. For the Public Safety Fund, we budgeted four point two million in revenue, we're at three point nine million, which is ninety-three percent of our budget. Budgeted expenditures were four point two million, and actual were four point two million, so we're right at budget. For the Highway fourteen Tiff District, we budgeted three hundred and fifty-five thousand in revenue, we're at three hundred and seventeen thousand, which is eighty-nine percent of our budget. Budgeted expenditures were four hundred and three thousand, we're at twenty-three hundred, which is just under one percent of the budget. For the Spanish Trail Tiff District, we budgeted thirty-one thousand in revenue, we're at thirty-two thousand, almost thirty-three thousand, which is a hundred and five percent of our budget. The budgeted expenditures for the Spanish Trail Tiff was two hundred and eighty-four dollars, we're at two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, which is eighty-four percent of the budget. Parks and Recreation, we budgeted one point two million in revenue, revenue, we had eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, which is seventy-four percent of our budget. The expenditures for Parks and Recreation, we budgeted one point seven million, we're at one point four million, which is eighty-three percent of the budget. Pepa Plex, we budgeted one point one million in revenue, we're at seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, which is sixty-nine percent of our budget. Budgeted expenses for Pepa Plex was one point five million, we're at eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is fifty-eight percent of the budget. For the Public Works Fund, we budgeted three million in revenue, excuse me, we're at two point six million, which is eighty-six percent of the budget. The expenditures for Public Works was three point seven million budgeted, and we're just under three million, which is eighty percent of our budget. Garbage Fund, we budgeted four point two million in revenue, we're at three point nine million in actual, which is ninety-three percent of the budget. For the expenditures, we budgeted four point three million, actual is three point nine million, which is eighty-nine percent of the budget. Section eight voucher program, we budgeted one point nine million in revenue, we're at one point nine million, which is a hundred and two, we're at a hundred and two percent of our budget. Budgeted expenditures for section eight was one point nine million, and we're just under that, at one point nine million, which is ninety-nine percent of our budget. For the wastewater, we budgeted six point three million in revenue, actual six point one million, which is ninety-seven percent of the budget. Budgeted expenditures for wastewater was nine point four million, and we're at five point five million, which is fifty-eight percent of our budget. Anyone have any questions on anything?
I actually have a question, I think it's probably more for you, though, where the money for the sidewalks on Sinistri come from, it's not coming out of the Tiff?
That was part ARPA, and I used a little-
She's shaking her head, no.
A little bit of David's money.[1780.12]
Tiff, it wasn't ARPA, it was David's money, thanks for correcting me, and the Tiff.
Twenty-three forty? I'm just, expenditures, maybe it's not there yet.
It said the Public Works Fund.
Okay.
All the monies were transferred into the Public's Work, Public Works Fund, that's what we accounted for the project.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
So, we took David's money, the Tiff money, put it in Public Works and then...
Yeah, we did, traded first.
Okay.
Okay. And then my last comment again for you more than anything is, it seems like our budgeted amounts on our sales tax and our tips, we're a little lower than what we predicted, so we just need to watch that trend because...
Believe me, I see it.
Yeah. I don't know if you're gonna have to ju-, some of them, yeah, but I don't know if there's gonna need to be an adjustment to the budget for twenty-five because we always go up, so the fact that we didn't meet the, the budgeted numbers, maybe we don't need to go up as high.
We, we haven't necessarily budgeted all of the October. Anything that we received in November for October, not budgeted, I'm sorry, recorded.
Okay.
We need to go ahead and, and post those receivables.
Okay, excellent.
We're, we're looking at that and shoring up all those numbers before the auditors come in.
Okay, cool.
Once they have audited numbers, I, I have plenty of time to make adjustments.
Right.
But I do notice that, I know that we have a little more money to count, but it's gonna be close if they come to our projections.
Right.
The good thing is, once I got audited numbers, my year is still, I've still got more than half a year left if I have to make some adjustments.
Okay. Well, I'm not gonna be here, so I just wanted to point out while I'm here.
Thank you.
So, that's why, Mayor, some of the actuals are low because you don't have the October in it?
We, well, we have what we received in October, but we also received some monies at the beginning of November that was for the month of October that we need to record as revenue in October.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Anybody else? Am I good? Cool, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmen's announcements. Councilwoman Marki, I'll start on your side.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
This Friday, we're having the Iberia Homeless Shelter fundraiser. If you didn't have a chance to purchase a ticket and you are interested, let me know and I'll see if we can squeeze you guys in some kind of way. If not, and you just want to make a donation, they do have a PayPal that you can donate to. It's paypal.me backslash Iberia homeless. And that's just any amount if you feel like you need to donate because they do help out our homeless population a good bit over there. They do a really good job also. And I want to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving. That has snuck up on me very quickly, but that's next week already. So, I hope you guys enjoy spending some time with your families. That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to remind everybody to go out and vote on December seventh. It's a runoff normally, I hate to say it, but it's true, it's normally a low turnout. We only have two, um, two local elections on the ballot. Runoff for District Two, the district that I serve in, and District Five, of course, the district that Councilwoman Reed serves in. Definitely need people to get out and vote, make, make a difference, you know, so that we can continue this progress of this city. You know, we need the right people sitting here so that they can continue the progress of this city. Also, I want to say Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I don't know the event, the name of the event, but I know on Thursday, there's a lot, you got more information on it?
Well, it's, it's on Thanksgiving Day and it's all around the city.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But yours, your group is actually gonna be doing it on, in Weston Park.
Correct, correct. So, Thanksgiving Day is...
Giving out dinners, yeah.
If you need a meal, it's, we're gonna be all over the city.
Right.
Yeah. That's it, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So, just, just, just want to shout out to, I had a chance to attend the Veterans Day celebration on Veterans Day and had a chance to say a few words and was just blown away by the support this community gives to such a valuable part of our community. Had a really good turnout and just not enough words to say what these gentlemen and ladies did for this country and was proud to be able to, you know, commend them on their efforts and the turnout was good. Shout out to the volunteers who put it on, a lot of work and, and thanks again, veterans, for what you did.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'd like to invite everybody here in our community to our Neighborhood Watch Annual Thanksgiving Dinner, which is tomorrow at six o'clock PM at the Slimon. Our featured speaker will be Matthew Galata. So, come on out and, you know, enjoy yourself and be thankful with us and that's all.
Thank you.
Um, let me start by saying Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope we all have a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. I'd also like to say that I wanna, I went to the veteran's celebration, but there were two, so I couldn't stay the whole time, so I had to leave and go to another one. And it was for the Robert B. Green, I don't know, troop, I don't know.
VFW?
VFW, okay. And, and I want to say thank you to the veterans because we were there to honor them and lo and behold, they honored me and Councilman Lewis with the Make a Difference pin. And, I mean, I was completely shocked. I mean, I couldn't believe they were calling us up because that was just a shock. And so, I just want to say thank you to them. They have no idea how much that meant to me and I'm sure to Councilman Lewis as well because we were not expecting it. I mean, we just went to the celebration because we were invited, so thank you very much for that. And again, just to reiterate what Councilman Lewis said, if you don't have a place to go to eat on Thursday, next Thursday, there are gonna be people serving dinners all around the city. If you don't, I don't know all the locations, but I do know that they're gonna be out there at Weston Park and you can pick up as many meals as you need in order for you to make sure you have a good Thanksgiving. So, thank you, that's it.
Yeah, I'd like to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving and I want to thank Ricky representing the city at the veterans thing that night. It must have had three hundred and seventy-five, four hundred people. It was unbelievable. That pavilion got so much opportunity and with the investment we do with the bathrooms and the stage, you could have put more people in it. It, it was just unbelievable. And it was, it was so great and appreciate all, all the giving they did to this country. And if you're not moved when you go to one of these things, something's wrong with you.
Yeah.
It had, it was just a great thing. It, it was a, a great turnout and, and I think with that addition that we're having for the stage and that, it would give more room for people to be able to sit because so much of the band and things take up space and you can't have as many people in the pavilion. So, it's gonna be a great investment for our downtown and it was a great event. Thank you, Mayor.
Cool. Yes, ma'am.
One question.
Sure.
People can still buy bricks, right?
Yes, oh, yeah, we, we constantly putting bricks in. We just had another order. I have a meeting Thursday morning at the Veterans Memorial about some other things we're gonna do, but certainly bricks are still available and I expect every month, everybody, every two months, we're putting additional bricks in.
And they don't have to be deceased?
No, no, if they're, if you're deceased, if you died in combat from our parish, you're on the wall.
Right.
If you served, then, you know, you can have a brick. And, and it's really not even limited to someone from, you know, if your father was somewheres, from somewheres else, but he served, you know, there are bricks there, but it's a, a lot of local people, there are some people who honored, you know, some family member that didn't live here, but certainly we have room. We probably have room for another thousand, maybe?
Okay, because my, my brother has a brick because he served and he's deceased, but my sister also served and I'd like to get her brick right next to his so that they could be together.
Call my office, they're, they're used to doing it.
I wasn't sure, okay.
And you can call the veterans.